Okay, I'll get away for the intro, I'm sorry. Okay. Now, we're supposed to hear the intro or not? We good? Okay. Today is January twenty first, twenty twenty five, and the time is five thirty P M. I'm gonna call to order tonight's work session. Beginning with an update from Mister Brian McCann from the mayor's office.
Thank you, sir. Parks and Rec Adult Swim Lessons for People Fifteen and Up, starting March first through April twenty six at the South High School Pool. Registration ends February twenty seventh, and the cost is forty dollars per person. Register online at pueblo.us/aquatics, by phone at seven one nine five five three two seven nine zero, or in person at the eight hundred Goodnight Building in City Park. Also, registration for the Adult Cornhole League has been extended until this Thursday, the twenty third, which is also the start date going forward every Thursday through March twenty seventh at El Central del Quinto Soul. Registration is forty dollars and also register online at pueblo.us, by phone at seven one nine five five three two seven nine zero, or in person at the Parks and Rec Building in City Park. The State of the City presented by Mayor Graham will be this Friday, January twenty fourth, here at Memorial Hall, from eight A M. to nine thirty A M. The doors will open at seven thirty and it starts promptly at eight. This will be Mayor Graham's first State of the City since taking office and outlines the accomplishments, challenges, and events of the past year, and sets the vision and priorities for the future of our city. The event will also stream on our Facebook and Channel Seventeen, and then I'd like to turn it over to the mayor for an update on the homeless shelter.
Thanks, Mister McKay, and I sent you all an email earlier today, just giving you the number updates of the clients that we were able to shelter since the nineteenth. So, the first night, we sheltered seventy-two individuals, the second night, sixty-eight individuals, and then last night, we sheltered seventy-five individuals. The coldest night, the shelter is still actively housing people, and we'll do so until tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay. And that concludes our update.
Any comments? Dennis, excuse me, Councilor Flores?
Yeah, I have a question. I, I've gone into the new restaurant where the clam shells at right on Northern Route. And I just, pardon me.
Is it Fuego's?
No, no, this is the old clam shell.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And they really, they really have great food there. In fact, I took a guest there the other day. But what are we going to do with that burned-out building behind? It just is so ugly, and I'm just wondering if anybody within the city is working on that, and whether there's, whether or not it's a money situation.
You know, we have an answer for you, because we are working.
All right, so you guys are reading my mind.
Thank you for the question. We, just a couple of months ago, got the notice forwarded to us from Regional that the building had been condemned, and the notice and order had been recorded. So that kicks off the process for us to be able to go through and do the condemnation, sorry, the beginning of the abatement of the property. This particular one is going to require an open-air abatement, so it's going to be different-sized building and scope, scale of building, right, but similar in what we had to do for the Albany structure. So it's going to require extensive abatement, open air or monitoring from Environmental Services to be able to do that work. But that building has been burned so many times, it can't be.
Did you say we were gonna have to go through a condemnation process?
The condemnation itself has been done, and that results in the notice and order being issued and then ultimately recorded. And when the owner of the property was not responsive to that notice and order, it got referred to the city, and so that kicks off this process.
And there probably wasn't insurance on that building for any kind of.
No, sir. The owner was deceased in this particular case, and so there's not a responsive owner in this particular case. So it's going to ultimately be something the city will have to take on as an abatement project under our demolition projects.
But the process has begun.
It has, it has. So that, again, that referral happened in, I believe, in November. So we've started that process of doing the environmental and historical analyses that have to be done before the work could actually start.
Right. Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Counselor, real quick, that's in my district, and I can tell you that the family that's involved is the Martinez's, and they own other properties around the area. There's been suggestions of maybe not redeveloping it so much in reference to another building, but even something like parking is so bad over there. There's been discussions about that, and right across the street is another entity called Fuego's. So we've kind of been eyeing that thing, but appreciate the update. Thank you. Counsel, anything else on this? We good? If I can get my... Okay, before we proceed any further, I want to let everybody know that President Mark Alef is currently in route. He should be here. He said he's gonna be about fifteen minutes late. Counselor Regina Maestri has got an issue in reference to a severity of a cold, and then Sarah Martinez had an obligation that she made us aware of last week, so we're good. What I'd like to do is begin with the city, excuse me, begin with our first presentation with the Fire Department update by Barb Huber and Brad Arbana from Alfred and Associates. And you're gonna hear a timer that's been set, thank God, by, by the city clerks. And we're gonna have that, and you hear that go off, it doesn't mean we're having a fire and get the hoses out. That means get ready to conclude your presentation. Okay, thank you.
All right, good evening. Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yes, this evening, we'd like to talk about all the exciting things that are going on in the Pueblo Fire Department and give you an update. Do have Public Works here with me in case there are any questions regarding the fire station builds. We were, we had invited the design team and the owners rep, but unfortunately, they also had other obligations this evening. So, like I just said, there's actually going to be four parts, and we can stop for the station build for questions, and then I'll move on with the rest of my presentation so that Andrew doesn't have to sit up here the whole time. So Andrew Hayes from Public Works is sitting here with me to talk about the timelines for completion and where they're at. Right now, it looks like Station Eleven's is on schedule with an opening of June twenty twenty five. Station Eight is not far behind with an opening date of July, and Station Six with an opening date of December twenty fifth. These are three of the four stations that we've asked about builds for. We will continue to push for the build for Station Ones over the next year.
So for the counselors, anyone who is not from the... Sorry, anyone who has not visited one of the project sites, I'll describe kind of where they are. But Station Number Eleven is the brand-new station that will be out at the intersection of West Twenty Fourth Street and Perry. This is the station that's furthest along, approximately, let's say, sixty-ish percent complete on construction overall. Next slide, please. Just minor updates here on the bottom of construction activities are ongoing, but essentially site curb and gutter work that's going on, grading has mostly been completed on the site. The structural steel, as you can see in that last photo, is up, and then there's interior framing work going on as well. Station Eight is the next one. This is up on Jerry Murphy Road. This will be a replacement for Station Eight that's on Bonfort. That station will remain in service. I'll let Chief Huber describe how that might be different in the future. But Station Eight, that is currently known on Bonfort, will now be located on Jerry Murphy Road. Again, most of these, these stations are essentially similar in construction style and type. There's obviously minor site adaptations for each one, but each one of these also started with staggered start dates and hence the different completion dates for each. But on Station Eight, the structural steel's been erected. They've got this radiant tubing installed. That's part of the geothermal and HX systems that are in there. And then the site utilities are complete as well. So this is the second furthest along in terms of progress, probably about forty-ish percent complete. And Station Six, located on Victory Lane, this is the intersection that you see in the kind of top-left-ish corner, is the intersection of East Fourth Street and Victory Lane, which is kind of out just to the west of the interchange with Highway ninety-six, forty-seven, and Highway fifty. So this is just located a little bit further to the east of the existing Fire Six, Fire Station Six location, which is right there on East Fourth Street. In this particular case, the last photo you saw, it had work going on on the site there, groundwork, so the site civil work is underway. Grading's nearly completed, and you saw excavations getting ready for concrete for the foundations for the building. So that's where that building's at. Given the site work and utility work that's there, it's probably about fifteen percent complete. Again, this is the third one. It'll be the last one completed. Following that, the work on the site here, there's also some improvements on Victory Lane as well that are going to be constructed to facilitate traffic movements in and out there. That concludes our update on the project status. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Can I ask one question? Didn't you have another presenter by the name of Brad Arbana from?
Brad Arbana is with the Architect Design Team, and they were unable to attend this evening because they had an event they had to go to.
Okay, so you have plenty of time. If you have eleven minutes, go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry.
Number eight, what's gonna happen with number eight?
The current number eight?
Yes.
That we're gonna be using it for office space and also for the directing others to services program.
So you convert, you convert what is now the fire station into an office complex, which was where your staff will be, you and your staff, where you are now.
Yes, and we'll still use the truck room for reserved space storage.
So you use the truck room for reserved space, which means it'll be unoccupied, maybe, or occupied, maybe, depending on?
It will be occupied with administrative personnel, but it won't be occupied with responding firefighters.
Okay, but in terms of the equipment, then?
That equipment that's currently there is gonna go to new Station Eight.
Okay, so there won't be any equipment there?
No, no first responding equipment.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, to your question, there's not any other work currently scheduled in that building either to accommodate that this, we're using the existing space with the existing layout as it sits right now.
And what about number six on fourth?
So number six, that station will be essentially abandoned, not, not, abandoned is not the right word. We're moving that station to the new Station Six location, but that station will not be used as a fire station.
So what, what, what are, what are, what? What are your intentions with that facility?
No firm plans have been set yet, so there's, there's some discussions about some alternative development that's going on in that area. That might, that might be part of a city development project there in that area.
Okay, because I'd like to be apprised of what's going on?
Yep. Yeah, no, no firm plans have been set at all on that, so.
Okay, because we got some good news the other day, you know, in terms of what's gonna happen up in the area where Span Elementary School used to be. There's gonna be a grocery store there, okay?
Good.
And we'll know more about that in the next month or two. That was confirmed with me the other day, something we've been working on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Flores? Yeah, let's go back to Station Six, I guess it is, the one we're talking about now. As I recollect, a couple of years ago, we had an extensive report on the fact that the neighborhood health, Pueblo Neighborhood Health Centers had that building that was the old Parkview Baptist Church or something at one time. And then they converted it into a clinic, and of course, then they, they moved to the other side of Grizzly, and they have the brand-new building. And that building that was on, it would have been Fifth and La Crosse, was torn down. And somewhere down the line, someone proposed a housing units there, and they had an elaborate drawing of it, which included the fire station, which sits probably, I think there's a house and then a fire station. So I, I think there's someone, I don't know, I haven't been in that area in a while. I'm not sure that they're doing anything there. But just to follow up on Counselor Latino's concern about that area, but it was, it seemed like there was a plan.
Yeah, your characterization is correct. There are some residential properties that exist between the old health center property and the fire station. So in order for anything to happen there to make that site developable, those would have to be acquired somehow.
But there's been no activity.
There's been no activity, to my knowledge, about pursuing that yet. At this moment, we're still focused on getting the construction done on the first fire station, on Fire Station Six. So we'll get them moved into their new site and then be able to make some determination about how to move forward with the existing building.
Can we go back and show the Station Eight? Yeah, and I, I didn't quite follow the conversation you were having with Counselor Latino about, I didn't know whether you were talking about the station that sits in the park by the land library, or you were talking about this facility. This will be a fire station that will basically be closer to University Hills than it is, well, you got Belmont across the bridge. But this is really right up to the, to the North Ridge area, right?
Correct.
That's correct. And it'll be an active fire station.
Yes.
The reason I bring this up, I was, I was, I met with some people that live on Overton Road. And it's ironic that what's happening in California right now looks a lot like what these people are being faced with now. They actually sit in the Pueblo County Fire District, but the nearest fire station is on Thirtieth and Baxter. It is so far away, and as we continue to build that eastern edge, it just keeps moving north. And I had, I met with Mayor Graham about whether or not there's any kind of situation where we could meet with the county fire chief, our city fire chief, and with these people. They literally have no fire protection, but they're almost, it's almost, and we're talking about a hundred residents in this area. It's completely what I call a protection class ten, which is virtually no, no coverage. But, but I guess my question has to do more with whether or not there's any kind of cooperative agreement, where if this, if these people would be willing to pay, you know, for fire service. And I know now that you, you've responded in that area to mitigate all of the brush and stuff we have on the fountain, but you can't respond to a house fire. You can respond to a house fire that could spread, so you're really working around that whole area, just to make sure it doesn't creep into the city of Pueblo. But that's my question, is whether or not, and we would have to involve, you know, our directors here in the city and the county commissioners to see if there's anything we can do. They virtually are landlocked. They have virtually, I don't know how long it would take from Thirtieth Lane and Baxter to respond to anything that happens there, but they can't get insurance anymore. Without, the last premium on one of those houses was like five thousand dollars, and now they, they can't even get insurance. And, and it's really the environment of the insurance industry and all of that. But I guess my question is whether or not we're willing to just sit down and talk about it, and whether or not, I know that we have a cooperative agreement with the West Park Fire District. That's a volunteer across from the city park, and I don't know if there's anything like that.
So we do have a mutual aid agreement with all the fire departments in Pueblo County, and the Emergency Services Bureau is responsible for that area, and they also manage the Emergency Operations Center. And they're generally very good about calling us, just like we're good about calling them when we need help, and then we respond and provide whatever support they need. Because they do wildland firefighting, but they don't do structural firefighting, so we usually respond to help them with that.
So, so you're telling me that you would respond to?
If they requested us, yes.
That doesn't, that goes, that doesn't go directly, it has to be authorized by?
The Emergency Services Bureau out of the sheriff's office.
Okay, so they do, yeah, there's, there's a misunderstanding there and somehow, and, because virtually the, the insurance companies are saying that they are in the protection class ten.
Well, technically, yeah, technically, that, that would be accurate because of where the boundaries lie, as far as the city and the county.
Yeah.
But I don't know how insurance works for a mutual aid agreement. That's definitely not my wheelhouse.
Yeah. Maybe we can talk about this in deeper detail.
Sure.
And through the permission of the mayor, and just so I can understand it better.
Yeah, I'd like to understand it better, too. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Any other question?
I'm sorry?
Any other questions, other?
Yeah, I was gonna ask if you have any other questions. If I have a question, I'm always gonna go last. That's just how I do things, but is there any other questions from Huber or Andres? Anything? Okay, thank you. Okay.
Is it true that all three of these fire stations are gonna have some sort of a thermal kind of system that's gonna help in cooling them off? That could effectively save us maybe some utility costs?
So we, we are installing, again, all of these stations were designed to a net-zero standard primarily. The backup energy, the backup generator systems are the only thing that have any kind of fossil fuel connection to them. So all of the sites are going to be able to generate the energy that they will consume, and the part of that was the geothermal systems that are installed there. So each of these have a geothermal well field that is going to be installed, that will either heat or cool, depending on which season we're in, the HX systems in those buildings. The city also received three ninety-thousand-dollar grants to offset some of the cost of that, so that was maybe, maybe a year ago or so, we got that announcement, so.
What was that amount again?
There were three grants, one for each fire station, and the amount of ninety thousand dollars each, so two hundred and seventy thousand dollars total to help offset some of those costs.
And would you consider them net-zero buildings, or?
There is, they are substantially so. The only thing that, again, is not, that is, has fossil fuels attached to it, is it's got a natural gas backup to the gas, to the generators that are there.
It's almost like these hybrid vehicles that run on batteries, and then if you needed gas, there has small.
Well, these are gonna be obviously electrical, they have, dependent on electrical energy primarily throughout the whole building. The only thing that is not, again, is those generators. But what that geothermal system did was it did allow us to reduce the total energy demand required at the peak, you know, heating and cooling seasons there, to reduce the amount of energy that's gonna be required. So it reduced the number of solar panels you have to install. But ultimately sizing that solar system on the, on the building is, is based on how much demand there is, and that geothermal system allowed us to offset some of it.
Does that also include a LEED-certified building or?
We did not pursue any kind of LEED standard necessarily, and LEED expands beyond just the energy components there. But this was, the focus on this was trying to reduce operational costs of the buildings over the life cycle of the facilities. And again, having, having virtually no energy bills for these buildings for the, for the future is a huge savings over all these years.
And a year from the day that you open it up, it'll be, see what kind of savings we might have.
Absolutely. I mean, we'll, we'll know, so there's a commissioning and testing phase as part of the kind of initial setup there to make sure that the systems are operating as they should. And there's measurement verification opportunities that I guess going forward to kind of validate that, that the savings that we anticipated are being realized.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from council? Good? Thank you, guys, for your update. Appreciate it very much. Unless you have anything else you would like to add.
Not for the station updates, and I'll go ahead and call Captain Dan Jones. He's gonna sit up here with me for the accreditation portion of this, but I'll go ahead and push through to the next section.
Okay.
All right, part two. Next week, I have the final ordinance for the last three conversions of firefighter positions to the engineer positions that are going to be needed for new Station elevens. We had talked about this last August as to being a three-part. All the other positions have been created, and six staffing positions were added to the budget this year, the captains and the MOs, and these are the last three positions. So when you see that on city councils' agenda next week, that's what that is about. Next up, we are working on our accreditation strategic plan. Like I said, this is Captain Dan Jones. He's our accreditation manager. I brought him here for any technical questions. There's some fun terminology sometimes. As we're designing this, we had an internal and an external stakeholders' meetings, September and October this year, this past year. And so with that, we take that feedback, and we work towards our goals to keep the department moving forward and being progressive. At the top of the list, of course, is the infrastructure needs, both in maintaining a, a healthy fleet of apparatus. The station improvements, which also include upgrades, which, thank you very much, you guys provided two hundred dollars in capital improvements for this year to work on some of the older stations as well as the new stations, and that's critical to the health and wellness of the firefighters. And then working towards next year's budget, we'll be asking about Station Ones again and financing that. We continue with the movement of the fire stations to work towards improving our response times, and with that, with the new locations, all the stations will have full coverage of the city with a four-minute response time. Our own personal goals, the one goal that we can have some control over is our turnout time, and that's time from when we get notified of a call till that truck starts rolling out of the station. And the national standard's ninety seconds. We're a little bit over that, and we're shooting to improve on that. Something that's helped significantly with that is we did a computer upgrade last year on our program and purchased some more data analysis. So now we can provide feedback to the crews, and that has helped significantly. Some other things, of course, is the improved equipment. You also approved, I believe it was two hundred and fifty thousand for the electrocardiogram monitors, their new monitors for doing health and wellness checks on patients as well as cardiology. And with those, they speak to the computer program that we have, and that's gonna improve our responses to the hospital as far as alerting the hospitals. So that's gonna be a significant improvement, as well as some other medical equipment, and we've increased the number of hands-on training that we do for our personnel. And that's also part of another goal that we have over the next few years in our strategic plan is to improve our professional development. As a department, we're looking to obtain more state certs so that we can go on to further education without any hiccups as far as not having the prerequisites to attend those classes. It also improves the level of professionalism. We're rolling out practical exams for the promotional process, because we know that some people are good at taking tests, but it's also good to be able to do the hands-on skills just as well. And we're also looking to improve our mentoring program so that people have somebody to go to for guidance. As far as community risk reduction, Dan is also the community risk reduction captain, so would you like to talk about all the things you're doing?
Sure. So with community risk reduction, we've been focusing mostly on a lot of public education outreach, trying to, sorry.
No, I threw him under the bus on this.
Yeah. In trying to participate more events that we can, helping out, asking, answering questions, a lot of people are wondering how the fire service responds, what's the safest thing to do for me to, when I evacuate my home? It's providing that service and that education, so whether it's resource fairs or, or just in the public, that's what, that's what we're doing. We're looking at. Did you want to?
The grant? Which one do you want? Yes, so a big part of community risk reduction, somebody mentioned it earlier, is you look at the fires and the wildland fires. We received a grant last year, and we also received it for this coming year for fifteen weeks of wildland mitigation. Last year, they did over eighty acres between Medicoa Lake, the Fountain River, and the Arkansas River, which is a critical part of stopping that wildland spread, wildland fire spread. Dan's really humble, but last year, they did these forty-five public events, a couple sound the alarm events, eighteen fire safety education outreaches, and that's just to name a few. But overall, there was over three thousand hours of public education, or I'm sorry, three thousand people that were reached doing public education to try to make the community safer. And that's a big part of us helping to reduce call volume, is to help people understand how they can help themselves to be safer. But we are excited to have that COSWOP grant again this year. You guys approved that a couple of months ago in the receipt of that grant. And so we usually don't know the schedule too far in advance, just for security reasons, but they're gonna be out there. And then the last thing are the safety improvements. The new fire stations help with the health and wellness of the firefighters with the compartmentation of those new stations. They keep the clean areas clean, and the dirty areas or the contaminated areas separated. Also with that, we continue to move forward with the station improvements. Like I mentioned, part of that is creating PPE storage areas, so they're not kept in the truck room where some of the truck contaminants are. As far as performance in twenty twenty-four, we had an estimated twenty-six thousand calls. The directing others to services ran about eight hundred and fifty-nine calls last year. That's about the same as the year before. But overall, the city fire department has seen about a four percent increase in calls from last year, but about the same as twenty twenty-two. As I spoke to earlier, our goal is to get our response times down right now, our ninetieth, which is basically, we've done better ninety, eighty-nine times. Prior to that, it was two minutes and eighteen seconds. So on our average, we're getting out on time, but we hold ourselves to a higher bar called the ninetieth, and we're at about two eighteen. That's where we provide the crews with that feedback, so that they can shoot for their own goals and trying to meet those. And we're at about two eighteen. Um, that's where we provide the crews with that feedback so that they can shoot for their own goals and trying to meet those times. Travel time went down a little bit and that could just be picking better routes. And then also our total response time went down. So when turnout times go down, our total response time is going to go down. And like I mentioned earlier, that is the one time that we can control. Dispatch, uh, when we went to Pro QA, that was a lot more questions when somebody called nine one one. Dispatch has done a significant job of training their personnel and those times have also gone down. So the calls are getting answered and processed quicker, which is a big part of that dispatch time. And as far as being out in the community for safety, between the companies and the inspectors, over four thousand inspections were performed in the community last year. To update you on what's upcoming in the fire department, we have an academy that we're projecting to start in March of fifteen. Of the positions that we have just converted, nine of the eighteen positions have been promoted. The nine for the new station, we're going to promote closer to when it opens so that we can have a place for those positions to be filled. The department changes with opening those stations is we're going to have to realign some of the territories so that we do hit those four minute response times with all the stations. We're reviewing our response packages because with the second truck that we've now put in service, we'll have a truck on each side of town. So we're evaluating what's our best way to respond with the right number of personnel and perform those duties most efficiently. As I spoke to earlier, we have some EMS upgrades this year. We have some state of the art laryngoscopes for intubations. And we have the new EKG monitors for medical evaluations. And all of these items and these topics are aligned with the strategic roles of improved customer service and service to the community. An interesting topic that I just thought I'd bring up just as a safety things that might look different out in the community is a lithium battery fires and electric vehicle fires. We have purchased some thermal runway blankets for electrical vehicle fires and we also are putting special containers on each apparatus for lithium battery fires. I don't know if anyone's seen, but a lot of times you'll, there's articles in the news about charging of the lithium batteries and the runway. So these are to help contain that, but also to educate the public on the importance that of having not aftermarket charger, but a proper battery that is UL certified because a lot of those aftermarkets are not safe. And especially if you are going to be charging, make sure you're around to pay attention that there isn't any problems. But what you will see is a lot of times with the electric vehicle fires, you're, we're going to attack that fire a little bit differently. It may burn a little bit longer, but then you'll see a blanket going over the top of it. It's just a different way and it helps to contain it because those fires can reignite. Time's up.
I hope you can turn it off, Benny, because I can't. I mean.
You were doing good. It wasn't even moving for a little while.
That wasn't bad.
So with that, um, the community is very supportive. I don't think I go a single week without somebody calling to say what a great job the firefighter is doing. I appreciate the work they do and the compassion they show. And I appreciate that the community reaches out to tell us that. Thank you to council for all your support in getting us to this point. It's a lot of exciting things and a lot of important pieces that had to come together pretty quickly. And also thank you to the administration and the other departments. It takes all the departments for us to get to this point. And it takes a lot of conversation and communication. And of course, the fire personnel, especially like nights like last night, worry about what kind of calls they're getting and how long they're out, out there in it. So I appreciate everything they do. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Anything further?
Thank you, Chairman. So on personnel, it always gets, the fire department personnel always get me all whacked out because I don't understand it. So with the new stations, the number of employees that we authorized in the twenty twenty five budget covers everything.
We're covered.
You're covered.
Yes, sir.
So the positions, the, the ones that you're bringing up, those three positions, they were already approved.
They're, they're on the budget. Yes, we are just converting them to engineer positions.
And you've told me this three or four times, right?
Yes, sir.
I gotta thank you.
I'll work on my communications.
You're doing good. Everybody loves the fire department, right?
They do.
In every town, everywhere, the fire department, man. They make calendars out of you guys. It's, it's awesome. Have nice mustaches. There's, who doesn't love the fire department? But anyway, I think, you know, it's very important, just like the community says that, you know, you guys do a great job. And, you know, I think all of us can sit up here and say, we hear a lot from our constituents when things go bad. But I never get complaints on the fire department. And I think that that's, you know, a testament because people are if, if they're upset, they'll tell you. And, uh, so keep up the good work. The response times are good. I, I was kind of thinking, if you add these new stations and that's obviously going to create better coverage, which should just automatically cut down on response times and.
That's the goal.
I mean, the turnout is internal, right?
Correct.
That's something you work on with, with personnel. But the response time should, should really be good. So this is really a win-win for the community.
Thank you.
And our safety. And thank you for what you do.
Council flowers, please. Yeah, I wanted to say, um, you know, if you look about what's happening, uh, you know, on the west coast and down in Florida. There's a lot of contraction that's going on with, uh, in the insurance business for people that need to insure their homes and, uh, but I, I, I don't think most people in Pueblo understand that we have one of the best fire protection districts. We're probably in the top five percent and I, I call that fire protection two. So that, uh, you know, uh, insurance companies will look at Pueblo a lot sooner than they will. You know, somebody living out in the county or up in the mountains. So we have a very prestigious protection class in Pueblo that includes the fact that we have, uh, a lot of water pressure, which is really significant in the fire insurance business. And we also have a fantastic response time. So that, you know, uh, people in Pueblo should understand that we pay lower premiums. When I hear people that live up in the mounds, it's, it's not uncommon now to somebody that had a typical house here in Pueblo and say up in Bailey or up in the mountains somewhere where they're paying, you know, seven, eight, nine thousand dollars for a one-year insurance policy. We're seeing a lot of rate increases in Pueblo anyway, but that's because of all the stuff that's happening away from us. But I, I just wanted, uh, the community to know that we're very fortunate to have the kind of fire protection that we have for all of those reasons. And I think above all is our training of our people. I think you guys do an amazing job. Uh, one of the things I did want to talk about is the mitigation of the undergrowth on the Fountain Creek. I don't know if you've been over to the area where they're going to build a new bridge going into Belmont. It's wide open now and that area was, uh, not only did it, it was a perfect place for the homeless to set up tents and you know, in that area, you don't see that anymore. And that's because all of the trees in that area, that, that highway department, they've cut, they've cut the, the, all of the brush and the limbs to about eight feet. That also happened when we cleaned up that area below Benedict Benedict Park. Uh, as you're driving now, you can see right through the whole thing. In fact, I didn't even know that that kind of existed. But now you can see that there was a road there and all kinds of stuff. And you'll see that the homeless are not going back in that area. We would much prefer as a city to have them in our shelters. Uh, I think that's, that's what we're striving for. But I would really encourage you to look, I think after what's happening in California, really look at the grants that are available through the feds of, of, of doing more of that on the Fountain Creek. Uh, I think, you know, we kill two birds with one stone, help mitigate fires that occur down there. And then also keeping the homeless away from the, the Fountain Creek. I think that's all I have to say, but, uh, thank you for the report.
Well, thank you. Yes, we are an ISO two and the hard water pressure definitely helps with that rating.
No question.
Okay. Anything else from council? I just have one question like to throw out. It may sound silly, but I'm going to ask it anyway because I'm pretty good at that. In reference to everything that's going on in Los Angeles and all that and water pressure and the access to water and the smelt fish and all that other stuff. I looked at some of the extent, the extinct dangerous endangered species in, in Colorado. We've got quite a bit. Do you foresee anything if something did happen within our forest catching fire and having access to those important areas? Maybe it's a county question. I don't know. But do you see any of that? Are we prepared for all of that down the road from what you know?
I think the hard part with that question is mother nature's in charge in that situation. When you're dealing with eighty mile an hour winds, it's really hard to get ahead of it. And we saw that here in Colorado a couple of years ago with the Marshall Fire. The best we can do is the mitigation, the planning, the education. Some proactive things is having people understand that they do need to be ready to go. If we say it's time to go. Having more than one way out of your neighborhood, more than one way out of town, having alternate plans on where you meet up with your family. These are all ways that you can help yourself to make it less stressful out of a terrible situation. But unfortunately, with those kinds of winds, if that situation were to happen and a power line goes down and starts a fire or whatever, it's gonna be hard to get ahead, ahead of it with those kinds of winds.
And Captain, in reference to mitigation, things in reference to this is old forest growth or things that have fallen down in the forest and that kind of cleanup. Do you have any idea on how we are on that in reference to that being fuel for other fires?
I'm sure it's definitely fuels for fires. If it's the public land, sorry, if it's privately owned, then we, what I can do is a community risk reduction is educate those individuals on how to clean up that area around there. Show them the importance of having that mitigation around the house. And that was one of my strategic plans is to kind of work with communities that are along the river or in areas that were identified in that risk assessment to help with that. But if it's privately owned or privately owned, that's, that's on theirs that they have to, best thing we can do is educate. Do I answer your question?
Yeah, just in reference to in worst case scenarios, do you feel you have all the tools and stuff you need to respond to some of the questions I'm asking you? Is there more stuff that you're looking for down the road?
You know, we have a pretty good, uh, response package as far as, um, calling up the local resources. We have four out of the eight surrounding counties also with mutual aid agreements. So if it was looking to be big and we called the cavalry, they would be coming. And so I feel confident in that regard that we could get assistance very quickly, just like we would provide assistance very quickly.
Okay. Uh, anything else? All right. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up is going to be in reference to the, um, date for the retreat, the discussion. I'd like to hear from council, starting with Brett.
What day do you typically like to meet?
Well, one of, I can make my recommendations, but I wonder if anybody has anything before I throw something. But I have, I have a date in mind, but.
I have some prior obligations and, you know, work on the weekend.
It has to happen pretty quick, but you have to have enough time to be able to turn in your, your request for what you want in the retreat. I looked at the calendar and I thought February twenty second looked like a great.
That Saturday is pretty good on my scale.
I, I, I have that day open too. We normally have that in the morning, don't we?
It's usually an all day.
Yeah, till about three.
Perfect.
Is that good for you?
I'm sure I can get work covered.
Okay, Joe, is the twenty second of February on a Saturday? And without having comments from the other two counselors, are we open? Okay.
I'm, I'm good with that day.
So is that a preliminary date until we hear from them? Okay. All right. Let's look at the twenty second of February on a Saturday. And I think in reference to the agenda, that was the last item. Anything from the mayor?
You know.
I'm sorry.
Mister Chairman, I would also say that you should, that all of council should email you with specifics that they want to see on the the agenda. So you can make a determination on, on how the, how this wants to go. So normally when we have a, a retreat is you send in, you say, hey, I want to have a specific meeting on this or that or the other. And if there's something that's really something that you want to work on, then I would email that request to, uh, the chairman and he'll work with the administration to get everything put together and make it happen.
Well, as a rookie chair, I'd like to ask, is there a, we see fifteen minute presentations, thirty minute presentations. Is there a rain? I mean, not have, haven't gone through this before that we look for.
Depends however many, however many requests we get. And then you can kind of set how much time you want to spend here. Like President Alef says, it usually starts at eight, ends at two or three, depending on what we have. We have a lunch. In between, sometimes we have a working lunch if we fall behind. I think last year we fell really far behind. So I think we had a working lunch. We came out here and ate. So, uh, Chairman, it really just depends on how many responses you get from council and what you want to see set on your agenda. And we can help you with all that as they come in and requesting for presenters to come and specifics on what you would like to see from each of the presenter. And if you need some additional fill on things that we could provide, uh, we'd be happy to do that. I just wanted to bring up location too. So we previously had it here in council chambers or we had it at the convention center. Kind of whichever council prefers, but if it's wherever it's going to be, we just need to make sure we have the room, the time set.
And when do you have to, how essential and what had, when do you have to have that information?
Probably by the end of the week. You know, if it's going to be here, I don't think it's, it's that big of a deal. But if you wanted to do that smaller room in the convention center where we've done before, we would need to contact them.
We've used the SRDA, um, also in several of our retreats over the last eight years, which is just across.
So it's really, it's truly your decision, Chairman, when, wherever you want to have it.
Okay.
This is obviously the cheapest place to have it. Um, we provide snacks for breakfast and then we'll get a lunch for the council and the directors that are here presenting.
Anybody else? Should we wait for, um, I'm sure we should. The other two councils down here want to suggest something, we're open to it. They gotta just get ahold of me and I'll, I'll bring it forward. Okay, uh, the next item is the executive session. It's in reference to.
Mister Chairman, I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Developing strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators under CRS section twenty four dash six dash four oh two, paren four, paren E, paren I. And to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer or sale of any real, personal or other property interest pursuant to CRS twenty four dash six dash four oh two, paren four, paren A. And more fully described as follows, to, to discuss the purchase of commercial property. No adoption of any proposed policy, position, resolution, rule, regulation or formal action shall occur at any executive session that is not open to the public.
Second.
A second.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, for the record, the work session is officially adjourned. And the time is,